All right, everyone, if we can please get back to our seats. Our questions, the third round of go-backs, we'll start with Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Moon. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started. Ms. McLaughlin, please.
I did.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Superintendent Braybrand wasn't here the last time I was speaking, so I was kind of hoping he'd be back here this time around, so I'm going to defer my time.
Okay.
Okay. I was waiting on you, because the reason why Dr. Braybrand is, you heard Ms. Schultz mention it, and so I want to make sure that you're prepared for our next budget work session. If the county executive is preparing the board supervisors that their next budget cycle for FY '21 is going to have an $80 million shortfall, this board, our board, needs to be equally prepared that while this might be the one-off year, we need to know whether or not we're going to be facing a similar shortfall, because spending $6 million now only turn around and cut tens of millions of dollars the following year actually makes things even more difficult. So, I just, I wanted to kind of put that on your radar, that I think that's going to be a really big deal. And then, I know that one of the things we've talked about for years, having been the daughter of a public school teacher and seeing how hard it was for my dad to support our family of five, I absolutely believe how we've got to have competitive wages for our teachers, and I'm proud of the work the board has done to date to bring us up to market, but one of the challenges that we do have is the fact that these are positions that as of now in society, they're 10-month positions. And so, when we're talking about benchmarking to professionalism, when I started my job with a bachelor's degree as a college admissions officer at Georgetown, I was getting paid $2,000 less than a teacher and working 12 months. So, it's not that I want to say, "Oh, our teachers are fine." I don't think that at all. I think they do work extremely hard, and we've got to make sure they have competitive wages. But to Ms. Hines' question, what are you going to benchmark those positions against? We have to benchmark them also against the county social workers and all these other positions that require similar degrees. So, I don't think it's going to be a simple solution to just figure this out all in one fell swoop. Dr. Dale, our former superintendent, one of the things I really agreed with him on was when he said, "How can we look at teacher positions where, you know, those who are looking at how do you have a more competitive salary, are there things they can do in those two months' time with the curriculum development?" Things that, so, they want to earn a 12-month salary because they want to have a competitive wage. But that is a bridge that we are facing that's a challenge, too, is so far, it's been treated as a 10-month position. So, I did want to raise that as part of, you know, the issues we have to talk about. I really wanted to follow up on what Mr. Moon said for our next meeting, which again, when we were talking, Ms. Burden, about benchmarking our average compensation to the other WABE schools, and saying that Fairfax County came in third, which technically, I think Arlington was at 118, and we were 117, 800, or whatever, so you could technically say if you round up, we're tied for second. And Montgomery County has the state of Maryland's, you know, funding that is very different from the Commonwealth of Virginia. But one of, I know, so I'll just close with this.
Please.
When we do the benchmarking, to circle back to Mr. Moon and I, and this would be a next step, is when this benchmarking was done, it also include the ERFC, because that's something, again, that we try and help our teachers understand, coming to work for Fairfax County has higher benefits than even Arlington, but I don't know the answer until we see that data.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. Schultz.
Yes, I just wanted to share some of the recommendations that came from the committee and to perhaps make it a next step to give us some idea as to their feasibility. One of them was implement a head-started follow-through program in K through three. The follow-through program includes health and social service components, home visits from parent professionals that encourage parents' participation in their child's education and participation in school advisory councils. And the second one was to reduce class sizes in K through two, to 13 to 17 per classroom in schools that have a large fraction of reduced-to-free-lunch students. So, I just wanted to include that because the board did not see those recommendations to, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, 13 to 17, reduce class sizes in K through two, this is not my time running now, to 13 to 17 per classroom in schools that have a large fraction of reduced-to-free-lunch students. I'm not evaluating those, but I did want the board to realize that those were recommendations from the committee. My other com-
From the Title I Advisory Committee, correct?
No, this is, this is with respect to the Advanced Academics. A-PAC, yes. Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay. So, the second thing I wanted to address was from Ms. Nixon's, and I don't think, you know, comments, none of the, none of us really commented on that, I think more because it was not really a budgetary issue, but I did want us to consider two possibilities to address some of your efforts, Dr. Nixon. I'm wondering, have we considered seeking surveys from our staff members with respect to how the working climate? Because I'm wondering how much that is impacting retention of our staff members. I have heard reports that people are afraid that they be identified, that they don't feel they have input, and so I'm wondering if that has some factor with respect to retention. And then, the other recommendation that I'd like to hear about as a next step is perhaps having some sort of a diverse panel, I've discussed this before, with respect to reviewing our new hires. I know that we implemented a number of things under the, under your predecessor. The needle did not move a whole lot. I see a lot of effort, I appreciate that effort, but I throw this out as something else to be considered. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Schultz, Ms. Schultz did not hear. Mr. Moon.
Okay, as far as my budget follow-up motion is concerned, you know, I'm not looking for, you know, definitive solution by the time we adopt FY '20 budget, which is only a few weeks away. What I'm looking for is having a comprehensive package to be included as a follow-up motion so the superintendent could study and bring a data with analysis to the board throughout the course of next year, so the board can, you know, develop a long-term plan to-
And please identify your motion for people who are listening.
Budget follow-up motion number, budget follow-up motion, I only have a one budget follow-up motion.
What's it for?
Teacher recruitment and retention.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that's what I'm looking for. And I just want to also use my time to comment on that seemingly larger amount of budget deficit that is being projected for FY '21, that's we heard for the first time this evening from the county side. I was looking at last year's documents for FY '19, county's FY '19 adopted budget plan, so which was about a year ago, right? They were looking at forecasting for FY '20, exactly the same language they used. They had said, they said basically, at that time, county side alone was projecting deficit of $60 million, 60.14, and school side is only going to get $59.74 million. But our transfer request, and as far as I understand, they're going to fully fund our request, is 84.4, so which is $25 million more than they projected a year ago. If you add the 25 plus the 60.14, that's another $85 million. And November, November '27, '18, even as close to November '27, '18, which is what, how many months ago? Five months ago, six months ago? They were, they were projecting 60, no, $70 million of deficit for both county and FCPAS put together for FY '20. So, folks, I know that they believe in very conservative visiting, which is a lot of it, but I've been doing my job as a board member for 20 years. I know how this works. I'm not as worried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to a point that Mr. McElveen had made about part-time workers and benefits, and I do think that that's something that we need to be looking at. We've made some great strides in terms of parent liaisons, and we have benefits for our food service workers and for our bus drivers, so that's something that I would love to work with Mr. McElveen and others on to see if we can move that forward for those workers. And there is a question in there, there's a budget question that would outline which workers we're talking about who still remain without benefits. Back to the issue of the side-by-side on the needs-based staffing and doing a school-by-school, as part of that next step, I would also like to see us list the FRM at each of those schools as well. That would be very helpful. And lastly, going back to the equity piece, which again, I think is one of the critical things this board really needs to address on the after-school and the extracurriculars. One of the things that I was surprised to learn when I had looked into this was that we don't have an overall RFP for our uniforms, for our sports. Everybody kind of does their own thing, so that is one of the areas where I think that could be potentially a win-win for all of our schools. If we, and Dr. Doran and I had had a conversation about that, so I just wanted to let the board know that that's something that I would like to look into, where if we did have an RFP, that schools wouldn't have to use it if they didn't want to, but I think that we could save significant sums of money and perhaps also ensure equity at the same time.
Thank you. Ms. Hines. Ms. Evans, is that a next step?
Yes. Let's make that a next step, to look into the potential for an RFP for our high school athletics. And it wouldn't have to be one, it could be, it could be a series of RFPs, they would have to work out the details on that, but I would, I would love to see a proposal on that.
Clark's good with that? Thank you. Ms. Hines.
Yeah, so, Ms. McLaughlin, thank you, on the question of the fact that, you know, teaching is a 10-month position, and that's true. I mean, we have a forever custom and tradition of teaching being one of those pink-collar jobs, right? There's supposed to be a second income in the home, and, you know, you don't work over the summer because you're a mom and your kids are also out of school, and so, but I think if we're trying to move forward from that picture of teaching, and I think we are, I think our goal is to draw more people into the profession and to make it more competitive with other professions that people in this area are drawn to, I think that we have to remember that that 10-month job, you know, the two months over the summer, teachers can't do any kind of work that actually brings their total income up to what they would be making in another profession. And that whole, you know, but you get the summers off, is not a welcome statement, right? Because that doesn't pay the mortgage, and it doesn't pay the rent. So, I, we would probably be breaking new ground and even talking about this, but I think it's worthwhile. We're Fairfax County, let's go out there and look, you know, maybe there's another way to look at this. If we are going to pay our teachers more than 105% of the median teacher salary income in the area, we're going to have to justify it, and I think we can, but we need to look and see maybe what other people are doing. So, thank you.
To Ms. Hines, is that a next step that you want?
I already have a next step on that.
Okay. All right. Did you get, did you get that? Next step, I'm sorry, I was talking to somebody.
She feels it's clear enough.
Okay, clear enough. We are down to Ms. Schultz, and please identify yourself if you, if you wanted one more go-back.
So, I'd asked a question earlier, what the, because we're talking, I hear people talking about taking more money out of the flexibility reserve. I do think it's important. So, we have an $8 million flexibility reserve, money has already been taken out, we're talking about taking out more. We didn't set aside any of the third quarter money in order to do anything, whether it was seclusion and restraint, whether it was the mobile partitions, and my question is, how do, how are we planning on backfilling all of these monies that we're taking out of the flexibility reserve? Is the thought that we're just going to have tens of millions of dollars left at the end of the year, that we can fill, you know, backfill all of the monies that we spend now? And what is the plan that we're going to do as a board, I'm talking to my fellow board members, of prioritizing? I mean, again, we're advocating for different areas within the wish list, but the question is, do we give priority to things that have to do with student achievement? If we're going to drive that, and which of them are going to do with student achievement? And if, and on the seclusion and restraint, to me, this is a, you know, I know there's a Hippocratic oath for do no harm, but certainly, there should be an educational equivalent. And if we know that things like the partitions, if we know that things like seclusion and restraint are in fact causing harm, the fact that we don't even have a board policy, I mean, that was, that was the reveal at our last work session, these are the things that have to be pushed to the front of the line. And, and I know we can, and we're going to work out whether IAs get this, or behavior intervention specialists get that, but we've got to get to a better understanding of where we are with the money that's already been taken out of the flexibility reserve, whether there is more exposure to the reason that we had to take money out of the flexibility reserve, and for what purpose, and how we handle some of these most serious issues facing the school system. Some of the most needy, some of the most vulnerable children in vulnerable circumstances need our attention first. You know, there's a difference between, you know, a want-to-have and a need-to-have. And then, even in the need-to-haves, there are priorities. You know, getting a new refrigerator is different than fixing a hole in your roof. We have a hole in our roof. And so, I'd like to hear, I would like a response from staff on where we are on the current flexibility reserve, what the anticipation is for year-end monies, and how we're going to have enough to cover all the things that we want to take out of the flexibility reserve and anticipated increases in those areas where we had to take the money out in the first place.
Ms. Burden, if you know it off the top of your head, or we can wait till Thursday?
There've only been, there's only one item that has been taken out of flexibility thus far, and that is a placeholder that was based on an issue that was discussed at closed session, that is the maximum amount that would be taken out, where, you know, cautiously optimistic that that was the worst-case scenario, and hopefully, it would be something less than that. The total was 2.6 million. The intention-
But the line item to which it was transferred is not closed. That was, that was in the, in the, in the motion.
The line item?
The line item to which the 2.6 million was transferred is not a closed session, it's not subject to closed session. That was in the motion.
Mr. Foster here.
I don't believe Mr. Foster is here. She is sharing that, she is sharing, what was the amount again?
2.6 million.
2.6, up to 2.6, and we'll get the right language for Thursday. I'm not going to use language that I'm not clear with the attorney not present. And I do believe we'd had some, a small amount of money around the name change for Justice High School that was in the flexibility reserve?
That's correct.
Was that this year? Yes?
Yeah, if some of it carried over into '19, yeah, right, that was allocated the previous year.
There may have been, we'll double, we'll have the updated information for the flexibility reserve on Thursday to address as appropriate with the appropriate legal counsel, too.
It is a routine matter that we level that back up to $8 million. I mean, it's been used over the years to fund a gap in the budget at this time during deliberations. It's been used as a beginning balance to assist with a future with the next year.
I'm sorry, my question is, what is the anticipated year-end budget amount such that we're going to have, we're going to have millions of dollars left over to backfill, and then, there are areas where we transferred that money to that I have to believe are now have an anticipated need for those line items to actually increase? So, so it's a, it's a double-edged sword, is not only was, did we, did we increase, basically, effectively in the middle of the year, we increased our budget by millions of dollars?
Nope.
Okay. We increased our spending by millions of dollars in an unanticipated fashion, and the question is, is that spending suddenly going to go away next year?
So, Ms. Schultz, can I suggest, since there seems to be a lack of clarity right now, that it, for a next step, that you ask for by Thursday to have an accounting of the impact on the flexibility reserve of actions already taken and expected, and what that impact is going, and the impact of our fourth quarter or year-end funding, and how that will fill in the flexibility.
Yeah, we can, we can delay it again. I don't know why we're being circumspect about it, because we all know what the line item is, and the line item was in the motion, and we read the motion out loud, so I really don't understand why we're sort of, I mean, I'm not saying it because I don't want to be the one to say it, but, you know, we've spent millions of more dollars than it was anticipated in a certain, in a certain, in a certain line item, and, and we have to talk about the reality of that, that cost continuing. That is not a one-time cost, that is, it's anticipated that that cost will unfortunately continue.
Can I just say, that's the part of it that we can't talk about in open meeting, which is what the cost was for and whether or not it will continue. So, I really would caution us to stop talking about this now, get some legal advice.
Clarification for Thursday. Ms. Hines is a lawyer, and I appreciate your input, Ms. Hines. Thank you so much. We're going, continuing on with our next, our go-backs, or, Ms. Strauss, you haven't had a single turn tonight, so this-
Great, thank you, and I very much appreciate everybody sharing, because I've been taking careful notes, because in the end, we have to come up with an endpoint, so I'm carefully trying to understand where everybody is coming from. I, just a couple of items, I do support the AERT. I am very thankful for the suggestion for using our staffing reserve. I had a number of schools where they were allocated more staff in August and September, but by that time, there was no staff to be had, and that was a huge, huge burden. So, if they are going to have those staff anyway, based on their numbers and where they will be, it is much better to release the staff when there are still teachers available. So, I very much appreciate that. In terms of special needs staffing and project momentum, I had a school that was tremendously helped by Project Momentum, and it could not have been done without the additional staffing given to the school, because there are other reports that indicate high-needs children, children with challenges do respond best with lowered class sizes and exceptional instructional approaches. It's not just more teachers in the classroom, it is outstanding best practice use of those teachers. Those are my chief issues, and I'm just continuing to listen to everybody else. We have to come to a decision at some point, so thank you all for sharing.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I have two more go-backs, and I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders. And then, we'll go to next steps.
I'd like to continue to follow up on Ms. Hines helping me out on this conversation, which is, as I noted earlier, Dr. Jack Dale had during the short time that he was here when I was here, and he talked about how do we enable teachers to have that option to work during the summer months and have the ability to earn a professional wage? Because when your salary is capped at 10 months of earnings potential, no summer job that a teacher earns, and again, I saw that with my own dad, it's pennies on the dollar compared to someone with a master's, a bachelor's degree, what have you. And so, when you look at a beginner teacher's salary, if we were to say to a new teacher, "Our starting salary is $50,000. However, if you would like to do a 12-month contract, basing that on the salaries we give, you now would have a $60,000 a year salary." To a teacher who's now earning $75,000 mid-career for their 10 months, you end up adding another $15,000, so now their $75,000 is $90,000 a year. That's a big deal for being able to pay the rent, pay for all the living expenses that teachers would have, and so, I'm thinking, you know, Ms. Hines, and even for all the wonderful men in our profession, that hopefully, it's a purple-collar job, you know, but that we could look at Dr. Braybrand as part of our wonderful new Director of HR, Dr. Nixon, that you have a task force that says, "How can we look at funding these summer stipends for teachers at their professional levels of salary and really start to move toward that direction?" Because we know that we've got a great need for a lot of work over the summer, and it is with intentionality, and to what somebody said earlier in this work session, which I know started a long time ago, we are wanting to direct our resources towards children and what helps student achievement, and I can't think of anything better than that. And I'll just close by saying that our university professors, if anyone wants to study what they get paid, it's not good, and our adjuncts, it's even worse. It's, if you break it down by the hour, so, this, this country as a whole, we want to pay university college coaches millions of millions of dollars a year, they make more than sometimes university presidents. So, our values are a little backward, but there are things, as Ms. Hines said, that we, as a school division, can do, and I also think it's where we can get the support of the community of saying, "Professionalize these opportunities with, with options."
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and if nobody else, we'll go to next steps after that.
Okay. Going back to priorities, started, I was the first one to speak this mor, this, it seems like this morning, but it was just a couple hours ago, about how we should be prioritizing our funding. And first and foremost, our priorities have to be focused on student achievement and student outcomes. And the best way of impacting student outcomes is by the quality of the teacher and the quality of the IA in the classroom. So, I would urge that when we look at our priorities, that we have to prioritize addressing the salaries of our IAs. It's 7.6 million, we obviously don't have the funding to fully fund it this year, but if we did a rollout similar to how we address the concerns of our teachers over three or four years, and putting in a million or $2 million towards that this year would be greatly appreciated. Similarly, top priority has to address the concerns of our exceptional students with disabilities and their families, and frankly, the IAs contribute to that, as well as the behavioral interventionist, and look forward to seeing what the superintendent comes back to as regarding the placeholder, because that should really be focused on student outcomes and not on reporting and monitoring. Lastly, along the same lines, the AERTs in our Title I schools will also greatly contribute to the opportunities available for our students who could benefit the most by it. to the opportunities available for our students who could benefit the most by it. Some of the others, obviously, the living wage, so that people who dedicate their lives to our students here in Fairfax County, either as educational support professionals or other functions in our, in our schools, it is a minimal investment to help them live in the communities in which they serve, because they truly are serving our communities. And so with that, I would just focus on, or urge my colleagues to focus on student outcomes as we prioritize.
Thank you. That's a good way to end, Ms. Corbett Sanders. So if we can see the next steps. All right, I will, I will read them. Allocate $600,000 from the flexibility reserve to fund the sensors for the movable walls. That is my amendment. We talked about that a lot tonight. Based upon, I think, the guidance given by staff, what I would like to see is, since that, they directed us that that's the most expedient way to get the funding allocated for the sensors on the motorized door panels, I would like to ask approval for this, and then I will take it through the process of having a budget motion at our next meeting. So if everybody is in favor of, everybody who would support that, I'm sorry. Oh, it needs another zero. It's, yes, it's $600,000. All right.
Mr. Arcoflex?
Yes.
You know, I'll be, I'll be supporting that when that comes to the regular meeting for actual vote.
Right.
So we're not voting tonight.
We're not voting tonight, but I just want, giving direction. Is everybody comfortable with the fact that, that I'll be bringing that forward? All right?
Wait, didn't we just get the explanation that we're going to hear where we are on the flexibility reserve on Thursday?
Yes.
So why are we doing next steps now if we're having the rest of the conversation on Thursday? And we're missing, and we're, but we're missing information that we know we're going to get on Thursday.
Well, I would.
But this, who doesn't want to allocate?
I, I, we are uninformed, that's the whole point. We're uninformed. If we don't have the information by which we can, I mean, it sounds like a good idea, but we don't have, no, we don't have $8 million. We know we have at, at a bare minimum 2.6 million less than eight, and we haven't had any conversation about that versus the year-end, the fourth quarter, year-end budget.
Well, I think, Mr. Arcoflex, you've asked for a show of hands. If someone does not feel comfortable raising their hand right now, that's, that's for them, and they need more information, they can get it later. But did we have a show of hands for this?
Yes, please show hands. Thank you. Next one, to have a, a plan to begin to address IA salaries to get 50%, and that should happen this year.
Provide a plan to address getting IA salaries to 50% of a teacher's salary to bringing, provide a plan for bringing IA salaries to 50% of the BA salaries for teachers with the first investment being in fiscal year '20. I can say provide a multi-year plan if you like. Do you want to put multi-year plan?
Okay. All right. Consensus on that one moving forward? Yes.
I, I have a clarifying question, and I actually will ask that, you know, we're, we're not necessarily voting on this one until we have Thursday for more conversation, and here's why. Because I don't know who decided IA should only get 50% of a teacher's salary. That means they'd only get $25,000 in their first year, and they're working a 40-hour week. So I'd.
Ms. McLaughlin, that's why I'm asking for a multi-year plan. The reason I went for 50% is that was the policy that was in place, and we eliminated the policy. So this was moving forward. If we want, and if we look at the response and the budget questions, there's an acknowledgement that we have fallen behind. We were originally told to freeze the IA salaries a couple of years ago when they did the market study, and now they realize that the market study, we've actually fallen behind.
But, but Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'll also say this because this is something we've had prior conversations about. At some point, depending on how we're doing IA compensation, and some of us have said it should be based on your degrees as well, so if you happen to be an IA with a bachelor's or master's versus someone who doesn't have a college degree yet, so lumping them all in into saying, you know, you're, every IA, regardless of education level, is going to get, you know, the same pay.
Would you accept for bringing at a minimum?
Yeah, I mean, yes, at a minimum is a starting point because it's really low.
I'm just asking for the plan here.
If you have an IA with a BA and an IA with a master's, we're already treating them different on the teacher scale. Why wouldn't we treat them, I, I don't understand the cookie cutter plan to treat them the same.
No, I understand, but Ms. Schultz, I think, I think what, what Ms. Corbett Sanders was saying is that we used to at least guarantee
Right.
that an IA's salary was going to be 50% of a teacher's salary. That guidance isn't even there. And right now, a beginning IA gets paid even less than a beginning teacher's salary.
Correct, and we need to bring them, less than 50%.
Right, that's insane.
And so we need to bring them in line. This is a starting point.
For, so it'd be multi-year plan for, for bringing, yeah, IA salaries at a minimum.
That works.
All right, you know what, guys? I think because some of these will require more information on Thursday, I think perhaps what we could do is some may be able to be passed tonight, and maybe we could just star the ones where we require more information. And I, I will let that to the maker of the next step to define whether or not this is something that we can easily agree to, or if we need to keep working on it and talk about it at the next meeting.
Or if we have generalized support.
Our general, yes, yes.
I mean, I do agree with at least this is helping Dr. Braybrand and the team see where we're starting to coalesce around. And so that could even help inform Thursday's conversation and beyond. So I like giving some guidance, just not hard and fast.
Right, right.
And it will be helpful for us to know which we need for this Thursday and which wouldn't necessarily need to be for Thursday.
Right. Did you, did you hear that, ladies over there? I think it's important. Mr. Smith, just, just say that again, because I think that's important to know.
Yeah, so, so while we want to be as responsive as possible to your questions, it will not be possible for us to do, answer all of these questions in a way that will be satisfactory for Thursday, but we will have an opportunity to answer questions before the end of the budget cycle. So for questions that you need question, or need answers to by Thursday, that would be very helpful for us. And then for those that you wouldn't necessarily need the answer by Thursday, we will ensure that we get it to you by the end of the budget process.
So the next one actually can include, there are multiple people who have addressed the same thing, which is that we don't want the focus on monitoring and reporting, but rather, the, the additional funding allocated to restraint and seclusion needs to address the, the immediate concerns of the, of this community with best practices to, to help these students more, best practices for behavioral intervention and communication supports for these students. And that includes, so we want to get rid of, it's, it's not even, shouldn't focus entirely on monitoring and reporting. It should be focused on supporting the students' needs for behavioral and interve, behavioral intervention and.
I have a question about, just, when we talk about monitoring and reporting, there are two kinds of reporting. One is out to the government or the community, and the other is reporting to parents. And I do think that we need to work on reporting to parents, so I'm not.
I agree, but I'm not sure it needs funding for that. It really, we have a policy that is supposed to have a reporting to parents and bringing parents in. So there's a fidelity of implementation that says we should be including our parents immediately.
I guess my only point is, this, this bucket, right, is for whatever is needed to improve what we're doing with restraint and seclusion. And I don't know if we need a little more money to help with reporting to parents. I don't know, right? We might, we might need extra people. I don't know. So, but I would rather say, what are our priorities for this bucket, right? And one is communicating with parents. The other is doing better in the classroom for these kids, right? Bringing best practice.
And more professional development and
Professional development, right.
Assistive technologies, and, I mean, it's a huge. My concern is that this was something that, when it was put in here, and I hate the expression, but it's kind of like throwing spaghetti at the wall, is what it looked like, rather than, we, we have a, a commitment by this board to address the concerns of this community, both with a near-term independent evaluation of the restraint and seclusion activities of the school system, and then longer term for a task force to proactively address broader concerns of this community. So when we have something like this, it looks like, oh, we're, you know, we're very quickly trying, we, we haven't even done those activities. So if we want, we can certainly put in a placeholder that says initial funding.
Is that what we're talking about, a placeholder for?
I mean, I don't like the word, Smith, anybody else's. You could say behavioral interventions, communications, and supports. And I think that'll cover. We, we know, look, we've been working hard on this. It wasn't ready for primetime tonight, and I talked with a few board members just in passing. I didn't want to bring something that wasn't fully vetted. We will have something for you on Thursday. And we understand the urgency of moving forward with getting best practices in every classroom and every school now.
Can we add professional development on there too?
Absolutely.
Okay. So bring yours into it.
Yeah, bring yours into it when we get to yours. How's that?
And we do know that this is prior to any third-party reporting that we would have. So this is a, a way for us to start the conversation, knowing that there may be additional recommendations that the board would have to implement.
Ms. Sanders? I'm sorry. People good with that, number three?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Number four, Ms. Evans.
So let's put, let's have a, so we know what we're talking about, let's start this by saying, with regard to the proposed new staffing standard. Okay. Provide a comparison of staffing at all elementary schools with what they would have received in staffing under the old formula and what they would receive under the new formula. And, and showing for each school, the FRM, the, the FRM percentage.
So Ms. Evans, do you expect that on Thursday?
I would love to have that on, you have that ready? Okay. Yes, that'd be great. And as, as a clarification, I'm assuming that when you say what schools would receive or would have received, we're talking about what they would receive in September? Right, I'm, I'm looking at fiscal '20, right? Because that's when it goes into, that was. But we're looking at staffing ultimately, because that's part of what they're doing with this staffing that would have released in May, and then ended up getting more staffing by September. Well, I'm talking about all of it. Right, exactly. Yeah, I'm talking about all of the staffing, and, and so the comparison of, of the new formula.
Yeah, we're not going to pick months. We'll just talk about enrollment. Enrollment under the old formula, enrollment under the new formula, to make it nice and clean.
Right, which is fine. Oh, well, actually, that's a very good point. We, we should, in connection with that, we, we should also have, have the enrollment number there as well, so we can see that, because if, okay.
So we'll, we'll show you what a school would have gotten if we had gone with the, the previous staffing formulas and then with our new staffing standards.
Okay, good, thank you.
And it will show the delta of increase or decrease.
Right, for, and for, because, to do it apples to apples, it has to be what it would have been in the coming fiscal year versus what it.
Yes, what it would have been if we'd used the old formula.
And the new, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Number five, Ms. Evans. I know you also have that, Lee, right? So that's just.
Yes, I just, yes, I want to see what, you know, if, if we go from 45 to 55%, which schools would no longer, would no longer be Title I?
That's fiscal year '21, not for next year's fiscal.
Right, so I understand this would be a projection. And so, and that can change, of course. You know, you could have a school going from 50 to, you know, 56, but, you know, based on your best projection for each schools, which, which ones would drop off the list? Did we, oh.
Yeah, I mean, I think she has that.
We have that.
They have that already.
Did we approve number four?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We did. Yeah, Ms. Keys-Gamar, is this the one you want to add to number three?
Well, I, I think, I think so, but it's also missing some of the things that I was concerned about, because I'm looking at it as a solution package, but I also wanted to make sure, and I, I think maybe your words cover it, Dr. Braybrand, but I do want to make sure that we're talking about what the scope of the issue is and that means exactly where these practices are in place, who's doing them, what level of training is required, et cetera. I don't think the board has a clear understanding of, of how this practice is used. I'm hearing lots of buzz in the community as to what it means, and, and we need to know what we're actually dealing with. I'm not sure that the previous number, whichever it was, was it 30? I'm not sure, captured that. And so that, that is part of it. And then the other part is making sure that we're looking at the family interaction portion of this, what, we've got two things to happen. One, we're, we've got a recognition that something happened. I think we've done that with some of our communication. But now we also need a plan for reconciliation with these families and, and our community so that they understand that we, we're making the correct. So this, to me, that, for this to be a comprehensive approach, it has to include these elements as well.
I want to share with the board one thing, though, that is a possibility. Again, I haven't looked at the final copy, to be honest. I may have a little room, there may be a placeholder of some amount that allows us to start to take input from the task force and ideas and best practices that we learn and embed that as we come into the following year, and not commit to some things when we haven't had the task force yet inform that. So I may have a little something in that. We'll be working with Teresa and Francisco on that and be glad to share with you on Thursday our updates.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is an opportunity for us to communicate to staff exactly what the expectations are. And so I think it is broader than what are best practices. We've now got to go back and deal with the debacle restoration. That's exactly right.
Okay, very good.
All right, so six and seven, are you good with the language there? But, that's what I'm wondering. Well, no, because I don't think everything would be available for Thursday.
I think number six covers it, and Karen's previously said best practices.
So we can eliminate number seven.
Well, the only part that I'm not sure about is whether we're looking at how to reduce the use of these practices.
Eliminate?
I said reduce our, yes, that, yes. Well, that's what I said in my comments initially, but it wasn't up there.
We're good.
Okay. So the best practices portion of that is, is previously mentioned in Karen's, but the rest of that sentence is not, so that's what we need.
So let's go ahead back up to three, if you don't mind. For reducing or eliminating restraint and seclusion, to include behavioral intervention, communication supports, and professional.
If, if you don't mind, Karen, I really would like to leave it separate because things tend to get lost. I just, okay, thanks.
All right.
We, we get it, we get it.
Okay. All right.
I'm clear on every one of these. I'm clear on every one of these practices.
Mr. Moon, I think we're okay.
That is given, so that can be removed.
Yeah, that can be removed. Do you want this for Thursday? Information on slide 23?
I need that for Thursday.
All right.
Let me be sure I know what staff's looking for there, when it says, "Provide additional detailed information on slide 23." Do we know in that dialogue, because it was three hours ago, what specifically he wants, and do we have it? And it's okay if you don't remember either, because I don't remember what it was.
No, he wants details of the fiscal '19 staffing standard and the fiscal '20 staffing standard.
Okay.
All right. Megan, you had a question?
Yeah, I remember I went after Mr. Moon before Ms. Palchuk, and mine's not up there.
Okay.
So, I did ask that Superintendent Brabham provide some guidance and direction to the board about what are the strategic priorities of these proposed budget changes. So, I appreciate that he's listened tonight, and I know that, in the end, this is for the 12 of us to decide, and I don't want to have a superintendent with the pressure of, "Who am I going to make upset or not?" What I would like, though, is you are the leader of operations, and we've all come with our best thinking, but it would be helpful for you to say, like, for example, Mr. Moon genuinely has been a great leading voice on custodians and trade positions. Ms. Palchuk's question next is on trades. But we don't know anything about what you have to say about that proposal from an operation standpoint and what we can do for FY '20. So, I just want to kind of prepare you with the support of our board, that that's kind of going to be the next step of our conversation on Thursday, which is, I listen to you all. Here's where I think we can make this work with our $6 million, because in the end, the 12 of us can have where we think priorities are, but you're supposed to bring your best thinking to the conversation, too, for us to know what the 12 of us to support.
Yeah, if the board desires that, I will be glad to do it.
All right. Be prepared on Thursday. Well, go ahead. Okay, wait. Pat has a question.
So, I thought maybe we could talk about it a little bit, if that's okay. Because while I would welcome any comments you might have, what I would not want to see is a priority list from the superintendent, because, you know, if my priorities are six on a list of 10, I'm not going to be happy, right? Because, let's face it, if, you know, we bring... The superintendent brings a really important perspective to this, that's right, but the strategic plan is our plan, and we bring our perspectives to it, too, and we bring our understanding of what our communities need, right, and the people that we talk to, what they need. So, I think it's a team effort. I don't want the superintendent to have a rank order of these things.
I did... Just to be clear, I did not say for him to rank order. I want him to weigh in on, we've brought a lot of different ways to spend $6 million. I think if he... I'm not asking him to pick favorites even. I'm just having him say, "This I can understand, listening to all of you, and what I understand from my day-to-day operations, this is going to be really critical in what we can accomplish in FY '20." Some of these, like a $36 million, what we do with the closing the gap on custodians and trades, that's a multi-year thing. But we just need to start having some framework. He's listened to us all night, but in the end, I'm still wanting to have him say, "We brought this forward in February." I still don't know what he thinks, and I want to know, so I know how to support all of you. I think he has that responsibility.
I would say, weigh in if you feel like there's something that we need to hear from you about the priorities here. I don't disagree that that's helpful.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're voting on all of these. So, where is yours? What is yours, Megan? It's nine, nine. Superintendent, provide direction and guidance.
Want to just say, take out the word guidance for people's comfort level? I mean, direction, sorry. Take out direction, just say guidance. He should give some guidance. That's why we have him leading the operations.
Who's all good with that? All right. Be prepared for guidance. Yeah. 10, Ms. Palchuk.
Am I reading it?
Yeah, I'll read it. Prioritize proposed trade positions, which are critical and which may be postponed.
Okay, so, and this is along the lines of where Ms. McLaughlin's going. I'd like to change it to, "All facilities positions," because the one that says, "Facilities trades" actually includes one security position and one boundary coordinator. And so, and I believe we may need a brief closed session on the security position. I already spoke to her chair about that, just to better understand what that is. So, I would like that, and, you know, I don't know if people would like additional information on the custodial. Those are also facilities positions, but any more information to help us make that decision would be very helpful.
I would like to add, because I think, figure eight, prioritize... You changed the words, how you want to change them. I don't want to change the words.
So, are you okay with me saying, "All facilities positions prioritize"?
Yes. Right. Okay. All right. So, that includes...
Definition of critical? Sorry? Yes, these are all the ones in my proposed amendments.
In the amendments.
Yes, all addition and requested, so that includes custodial...
We're talking about the amendments here.
Yes, the amendments.
Exactly, exactly.
So, we can all have more information, you know. My amendments came from guidance and conversations with staff, so I just want myself and my colleagues to get more information, so we can make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
So, the first thing, I would not use the word "create," but I think what I... It would be more to provide information to the board on the creation or possible creation of a rapid response team. Here's the... The main concept is to... I think that one of the failings of the situation was the repetitive nature of some of these events. Teachers need to feel secure to say, "Hey, we need to bring in help." Principals need to feel secure to say, "Hey, I've got a situation." And there has to be a resource that can come in quickly to facilitate and help those teachers who are doing their best in very difficult situations likely, to provide additional creativity and support. And I think there's got to be a way that we can do this in a way that supports teachers and also gives much more confidence to parents and that their children are being, you know, really treated in a special way, reflecting their needs.
What's your...
So, I guess the question...
No, he didn't.
Yeah, it's... I guess my point is, I don't see why we can't at least start by saying, you know, "We're ready." If somebody calls tomorrow, I've got people that I can deploy and help that classroom out, help that principal out.
We have that now, and one of the things that Ms. Johnson was talking about when we had our early at-work session was building in crisis support teams and resource teams for every school. So, we're going to really develop that capacity in every school, but we have it now at the county. But we'll be glad to talk about what I have for Thursday. I'll share on Thursday, and what I have longer, but before the end of the budget process, I'll share then. And I certainly understand the spirit of what you're asking for.
Okay. So, anything that can't be completed tomorrow, we're hopeful you'll have it by the end of the budget process, which gives you more time. All right. Ms. Schultz, number 12. Provide update on what our needs-based staffing model has done to close the minority student achievement gap.
I had said, and this will be the third time I'm saying it, I didn't say just minority student achievement. I said minority students, social, economic, and students with disabilities, and what that correlation is between the money that we spend on needs-based staffing to drive down class size and actual student achievement gains. And so, I had sent over some information. It's very simple. I would like for us to be provided student achievement gains in correlation to class size driven by needs-based staffing. I mean, we're buying down classroom sizes, and we have thousands of classrooms with tens of thousands of students in them, and classrooms under the size of 20, and I don't have any understanding that there's any student achievement gains associated with that, based on the goal reporting that has been presented to us, that shows that there is a persistent minority student achievement gap and students with disabilities achievement gap, and I don't know what the social, economic student achievement gap is, but I assume that that is similarly flat.
You have a question, Ms. Kies-Gamar?
I do, because I think that if we get that information, we have to have it in context. And I'm not sure that here... Because if the kid came in at a certain place, we have to look at that growth. That's different than... And then, it's different if we're just comparing where that kid is at the end to everybody else in the county. It's deceiving, and so I...
I couldn't agree with you more, and that's actually my point, which is, we're saying that it's the class size that's showing student growth progression, and I don't know that there isn't student growth progression in class sizes that are above 20. And so, we're funding based on a feeling, not with any associated data and context. So, you're absolutely right.
Well, I'm not sure we're in agreement. I'm pretty sure we're not. But I think that we do have to look at where those kids were when they came in, and I know that these needs are much more significant, and these teachers are dealing with a lot more in many instances. And so, that is my concern.
What do we do about a child who has needs that's in a class size that's above 20?
I think that's the reason I'm saying this needs to be a needs analysis. I'm not saying you shouldn't get the information, but I think it won't be worth much if we don't know where the kid started.
I have two more comments on this, Ms. Evans and Ms. Hines.
I'm just trying to see, how would staff do this? Because you would be trying to do a comparison between what the achievement would have been if the class size were larger compared with what it is when the class size is the size it is. How would we do that comparison, because we have no way of knowing the comparative?
You just compare student achievement, and we have three levels of class size, basically. Under 20, under our floor, we have class sizes that are okay, and then we have many, many thousands of children that are in class sizes that are kind of at the ceiling. And so, the question is...
But you've got so many variables in this. This looks to me like it's a huge research project. If we were going to do it the correct way, if we were really going to do this the correct way, we would be looking at all kinds of variables. It's not... You can't just compare... It's a false comparison. And that's kind of what I was going to say. You're really talking about a return-on-investment kind of analysis, right? And there are just so many variables that you can't... I mean, it's... We've talked before about doing ROI analyses on some of our investments, and this is one that I just think would be a huge task.
We have some partial ROI that we're going to provide for the student success reports to the board, so they're not as comprehensive as this, but they're... We will be able to share information about ROI with the dollars that we've expended and the gains that we've seen, based on the targets and metrics that are outlined in the strategic plan.
Yeah, because I just think if you just look at class size, we know that class sizes that are larger are in buildings with kids coming from more highly educated, more affluent families, so they are going to do better, right? And so, right there, you've got... It's the truth. And right there, you have a... You know, you just have a bias right there in the data.
I think that students should be... We should be... Have the expectation, and we know there are school districts that are 100% FRM that have terrific student achievement. I don't want to say that there's a bias that if a student is not coming from a family of means, that they are going to perform poorly. That's the reverse bias.
No, no, excuse me. I never said they're going to perform poorly, but they're starting from a different place at the beginning of their career, at the beginning of the school year every year, and at the beginning of the day, every day.
All right, we understand the differences.
Beginning from a different place. This is a big conversation that we really can't have right now.
Right. And Dr. Brabham, you want to speak?
I would just say this. I mean, just being honest, right? Keeping the team, after a certain time, I have watched in two years where our conversations lose the partnership. We have 33 next steps, because I took a quick glance when it got up there. We're at, like, I don't know, 12 now. So, on this rate, we're here another hour. I get the spirit of what Ms. Schultz is saying. Mr. Smith said we'll have some data. Will we have it as comprehensively as this board member or board of 12 will want? No. We'll share with you what we have, and if you direct us to have more, show us more we can in the future.
I would like to point out, I think I maybe have one, maybe two next steps out of 33. So, you know, the scope can be argued, but I certainly haven't thrown 33 next steps up there.
All right. Since we've been taking votes, everybody who's comfortable supporting this, raise your hands. Mr. Smith, I... Since there wasn't board support to do this, though, I think we all will look forward to whatever analysis you have at a later time.
Yes, yeah, there will be information in the Goal One report.
All right, thank you. 13, Mr. McElveen. Yeah, we're removing 12. We're removing both 12 and 13.
We're going to get this in the Goal Report. Can we just say, "Information to be provided in the Goal Report," so we don't lose it for posterity's sake?
Sure, sure. I think people will be comfortable with that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Right.
And to clarify, it won't be necessarily around class size, but it will be around metrics and targets in the strategic plan and some ROI as it relates to those metrics and targets.
Is it the class size of all high students?
There's nothing specifically that I can recall about class size, but there are some ROI analysis based on current programs and metrics and targets.
Okay, wait, we have to go back and vote on 12 again. But do you want to change that, Elizabeth, so there's support?
How about information to the extent available will be provided in the future Goal One Report?
Do you want to say on class size, or do you want to say on what Marty said is going to... On ROI?
I don't know that it isn't going to include something related to class size, so I would like it to say that, and to the extent that it's available, it'll be provided in a future Goal Report.
People okay with that? Okay. All right, good. Ms. Kies-Gamar, can you check in with 13?
I think what I'm trying to address is that I've received comments from the community about staffing reducing, even though we are having more students that have special education needs. So, if we have a formula that already addresses that, I mean, I can simply get an explanation, but I wanted us to consider whether the way that we're doing our staffing number, the way that we're figuring out our staffing needs, if... And we're not necessarily increasing when we have numbers now that are increasing. I'm trying to get to that. I think it says it, but if you understand it, I'm good with it.
Can you... Our current staffing formula?
Yeah, that's fine. That's good. At 9 o'clock, that sounds wonderful.
That is, and that's interesting.
Okay. Now, the next one I was just trying to discuss with Dr. Duran. Okay, did you want to speak to it?
Should be sped.
Sped, yeah, it should be sped. I didn't see what she said.
13, it's really 32 here.
Yes.
Why don't we just seriously, like, just read them really fast? Scott can look them over and talk to the chair and vice chair and say...
Well, I think the people who's... I think if I was one of the people that came later on the thing, mine wouldn't get the attention that these first 15 did. We're halfway there. Let's just be expedient. I think that's the first...
Go ahead, Dr. Duran.
We're on 13.
Doctor, I was...
If I think I understood your questions, that helps me. Provide information on the particular needs. What we can do is provide information on the types of staffing positions that are allocated to our Title I schools. For example, is it instructional, coach to support instruction? Is it a... How many social workers do we have, et cetera? How many counselors? Is that the kind of question you have? That is the available data we have to show, because in the context of two hours ago, whenever it was that you were talking, I think it was your concern about what are the kind of supports that we're providing, and so from a budgetary standpoint, we can provide that, if that's what you were asking, but that's, I'm not sure.
It's dancing around it, but I'm happy to discuss it with you. I don't think we have to belabor the point. Now, I was trying to make sure we understood, I know what I have seen in going in these Title I schools and what our staff is dealing with. I'm not sure that everyone gets that. Right, so, I mean, we, if we can.
Like, what do you mean, social workers?
We can look, we can go at it that way, and you and I can discuss it later, that's fine.
We certainly can, and bring back the conference. I know by Thursday, we'll have that.
No, I think it's, it's too big. It's fine.
Mr. Moon, 15. Yes, good. Okay, additional step, Ms. McLaughlin.
Yep.
Okay, that had to do with the county comments, county comments, right, yes, yeah. Okay.
Well, we communicated this evening, Mr. Hill and I communicated this evening, I'll be ready on Thursday to update the board appropriately.
All right. Ms. Palchek, give the next three.
Yes, 17, yes, if we could get both, I guess there were two years, but past history, if we, anything we can get by Thursday, I think is helpful. I think 18, 19 can be included in, what was it, number three? And then 20, I believe, is a repeat.
I think it is. All right, should we eliminate 18 and 19, or do you want to go back and look at three again? Up to you.
Yeah, I think we had the parents in the.
Scott will lump them together. Scott and staff will lump them together, just leave them there.
You can delete 20, it's a repeat. Thank you. Delete 20.
Delete 20. Okay, Hines, Ms. Hines, it's yours.
This one is really, it can be rolled into Ms. Evans, it was, you know, what's really going to happen if you go from 45 to 55 percent? I think that, yeah.
Delete 21. That one's straightforward. Let's eat your salaries. I read it. It's compensation. Aren't they all part of this?
I can simply get an opinion on that. I just wanted to make sure the board heard what I had been hearing, so that's fine. 23, the same is true for that one. 24 has to do with Ms. Nixon's, Dr. Nixon's report, and those are, I'd like to hear an opinion on what it would take to get that done. I don't know that it would become a budget item or not.
Can I ask about 23? Because I submitted the budget question on the class sizes for elementary. You don't know that they aren't already that small.
I don't know, I don't.
So we have to have the information, this is another thing, that we're not having the information.
So it was say, provide information on class size, not.
Because.
No, that was, that was a recommendation that was made at the committee level. Certainly, they can tell us where they, where the. Yes, 22 and 23, both of those came from the committee.
They should be together. I can just tell you, from fiscal 14, 15, 247 of our classrooms had 17 and below. So, I mean, many of the class sizes are very small, but we have to have the information given to us so we understand in context how many are actually not that small.
The, Ms. Gamar, if I'm, Ms. Kiesgmar, if I'm reading this correctly, what I think you're saying is you want us to follow up and review these AIPAC suggestions that include these suggestions they made. You're not telling us to reduce class size further.
No, I'm not telling.
You're asking us to review those suggestions and then bring.
I just wanted to make sure that the board heard what I heard, because we were giving the one's suggestion, which is fine.
Are you looking for a number, a price tag on it?
I think there is an analysis, I'm the AIPAC representative, so I think there is an analysis out there that the staff has, staff already has.
Okay, okay.
You want us to follow up on the AIPAC recommendations?
Right, I wanted us to have a more.
Right, and it also included additional arts, more than, more than just Title I. That became the, a real budget item due to the high cost of the other arts, but that was their number one. So, Mr. Moon.
Wait, I think 25, diverse panel, I think I've said this before, if you guys understand that, I'm good. Does everybody understand what, okay.
Hey, Illyon.
You know, 26 is going to be basically my follow-on motion, so it doesn't have to be there. I'll work with the staff to craft something.
Wait, 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 don't erase it yet.
Before you erase it, you're going to work with staff.
I'm going to work with the staff with a follow-on motion.
And you have that thing, though, that you want?
It's in, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, because he's going to do a follow-on. 26, Ms. Evans. We can delete 26. 27 is also yours, Ms. Evans.
Yeah, I guess I would say explore, yeah, explore, yeah, a division-wide, sure, that works.
Yeah, and just a nugget, we've had a division-wide RFP for high school rings for years and years in Fairfax County, so that's your concept, this talking about bringing in the power of the entire system on certain things. So it is, it's very intriguing, and it's something we really should have put an equity lens years ago to look at, and we did on some things, and we did it on others. Uniforms were school-based, but rings were done under a county contract. How about that?
Well, that's interesting. Well, thank you, yes.
Ms. Schultz. Last one. All right, guys, remember, we have another work session like this, Thursday, Thursday, there, it starts with a closed meeting, apparently, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
What's at 4:30, what did you say?
5:15, I have closed meeting on my thing, with, followed by a budget work session at 6:30.
Yes, it's actually 5 o'clock, and it's.
All right, so, 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 yes, 16:10, there'll be a closed meeting beginning at 5, followed by a budget work session at 6:30. It's from 6:30 to 9:00, again, we have scheduled. Thank you for your time tonight and the thoughtful conversation, I appreciate it.